Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, February 10th, 2025. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge Allegiance and a Silent Prayer.
Pledge Allegiance. United States of America, two Republicans, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and
All set?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Alderman Elsa.
Here.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Present.
Alderman New James.
Here.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Talde Dean.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman DG O'Vancarlow.
Here.
Twelve present, three absent.
Okay, Alderman Dorso and Alderman Lopez did let us know that they would not be able to attend the meeting. I would assume Alderman New James is on his way. With that, the next item on the agenda, we're going to skip over to a presentation and we'll start with public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff, Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 1400 Marionard Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Marionard Road. Thank you, Mr. President, for letting us speak before the presentation. I really do appreciate it. For fiscal year 2025, update on city budget. Maybe we can get some soft cushions on these hardwood benches. I've been asking that for a long time, and there's a lot of money being allocated down here, and people said to me that, you know, we sit here sometimes for an hour, half an hour, 45 minutes, and a friend of mine who's veteran said, "Martin, you know, here I am, I serve my country, and they can't even put some soft cushions on the benches." Hopefully, they'll beat that in the new budget. Hopefully, that'll happen. And I like to see the, glad to see we're making some good appointments on the various boards and commissions. Speaking of that, I'm very happy and delighted Angela Battle is on the agenda for the appointment of Assistant City Clerk. She's an awesome lady. You know, I have to commend Michael, our City Clerk, and also Debbie. She also worked very well with the commissions and boards throughout the years. And Angela, as you know, well-deserved lady. I would recommend her highly to get reappointed on this board and commission, because every time I called down there, irregardless of what board or commission I served on, she was always accommodating, all the time. She always called me back, and I have to commend Michael Dalton in his office and the fine ladies that work there. So hopefully, you guys will consider what I'm asking you to do and reappoint her. Also pertaining to the current situation in Washington, DC, and nonprofit organizations for federal grants and bonds, let's not jump to any conclusions until we all see exactly what comes out of this. I know a lot of people are watching the media, watching the current president, and watching so many different things going on in our country, but you know what? We're all Americans, and the bottom line is the election's over. So let's work together with this new administration, just like when you have a new administration coming in. The city of Waterbury, we're up in Hartford, irregardless of what party you're affiliated with, let's just work together and see what happens before we make any unfounded decisions of what's going on. Because I know there's people out there right now with the current president, people do not like him. I personally voted for him, and but the bottom line is it doesn't matter, because I voted Republican in the past, Democrat or Independent, and I only vote for the person, I don't vote for the party. I'm sure people in my party probably get upset about that, but I'm being perfectly honest with you. Nobody controls my vote, and I vote the way I feel. That's how I feel. Also, please take note, I truly believe we all have some, we all have become addicted to far too much government on the local level, state level, and especially on the federal level. You know, we all know the cuts have to be made, and that's just the way things go. Because if you look on the agenda, there's a lot of things on here where there's going to be a lot of money being allocated for spending, irregardless of where the money's going to go. The bottom line is we got to watch and control our spending, especially now with what's going on in federal government with new administration coming in, a very conservative administration. And I know there's been a lot of people complaining about Elon Musk. I think Elon Musk is, you know, appointed on that commission board, whatever he's on, and with the Treasury Department, and there's a lot of people that aren't happy with that. But you know what? When the mayor comes in, he makes his staff his appointments, and he does what he has to do, irregardless of how people feel, and it's not to be disrespectful. And the same thing with the governor of a state, he makes appointments on people who he wants to feel are qualified. And so we have our President Trump making appointments on various boards and commissions that he feels in his heart and soul that they're qualified, that they're doing a good job. So let's stop listening to all the rhetoric on there, on the local networks, and the way people are talking, and elaborating with a lot of emphasis, because most of them don't even know what they were talking about, and they couldn't care less, okay? The bottom line, we're all Americans, and let's all stop the non-critical nonsense, and let's all work together for the betterment of the country. Thank you.
Next speaker from 413 Harper's Ferry Road, Paul Condas.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Condas. I reside at 413 Harper's Ferry Road. For the record, I will not be addressing anything on the agenda tonight in my remarks. What I want to bring your attention to, and I'm hoping to pique some interest in, is the tax warrant sales in the city of Waterbury. I'm an avid reader of several newspapers, cover to cover, every day, and in the past several years, we averaged between 17 and 22, 24 a month, foreclosures for tax warrants in the city of Waterbury. In the last six months, this is two weeks ago, 40. Two days ago, 19. That's 720 houses a year that are being foreclosed on. Now, you all know, excuse me, 50% of those people are never going to pay their taxes. They owe the city, they owe the state, they owe the IRS, they owe the CLMP, they owe the gas. But the other 50%, for some reason, don't pay their taxes with their mortgage, and they're obviously having a tough time budgeting. In this particular published tax warrant, there's four people that are being foreclosed on for $2,025. Now, listen, I fully understand we need to collect our taxes, but in this particular case, this means they didn't pay their taxes six months ago, and they're being foreclosed on. I would like to pique somebody's interest on this board or in the administration. I would like to see us partner with a local bank, a bank looking for good publicity, along with the city, and set up no-fee tax accounts, where people could deposit their money by the day, by the week, by the month, by the quarter, and then by contract, that money would be sent to the city on January and July 1st. Okay? These people are obviously not budgeting correctly, for whatever reason. Most of us pay our taxes with our mortgage. These people don't. If we can save 350 people their homes, wouldn't it be a great publicity for the city of Waterbury? Now, listen, I don't expect this to cost anything, but I'm hoping somebody on the board or in the administration will at least make a phone call to a local bank that they deal with and ask them if this is something that can be done. I think it would help tremendously. It will continue on our path to helping those less fortunate. And as you know, we do an outstanding job of that in this city. Okay? Let's keep going and save these people's houses. 350 houses gone because of tax warrants. As I said, the other 350, they're not going to pay. There's somebody here that owes $38,000. They haven't paid in five years. Okay? But like I said, there's four in a row, they must be condos, $2,025. It's a shame to lose your home because you don't budget correctly. So I'm asking for your help in this matter. I think it would be a great idea for the city if we could get it done at no fee. Thank you.
Next speaker from 45 Pierce Street, Sharon Samaska.
Sharon Samaska, 45 Pierce Street in Waterbury. Thank you for the opportunity and privilege to speak to you in this city, in this building. I cherish this right, and I cherish my right to vote. I'm going to be going into some things town-wise, and then I'm going to go on to a bigger scale. South Leonard Street, off-ramp, Route 8 North, please, please look into getting a traffic light there. You cannot see cars and trucks speeding off that Route 8, and people on South Leonard tried to go by other people who were stopped waiting, and consequently rear-end accidents, of which I was one. Bristol Babcock site, the signs that were taken down, and I did have the police investigate this, have not been replaced. My questions about them go unanswered. My questions regarding funding cuts and progress on the site remain unanswered. The signage ordinance that Nogatuck Valley Project brought to this board almost three years ago, I believe, no action has yet been taken, no information as to why. If we save one child's life, 10 signs are worth it. Senior Center Chor Service, please, for snow plowing, cutting grass, drain cleaning. An elderly person with whom I'm working in the last 10 days has been charged over $200 for someone to come and shovel some snow. I made 11 calls to snow plow businesses. Not one answered their phone. Other cities and towns have chore services. It must apparently come out of our city budget. Please put this on the agenda to save our elderly. I suggest forums with you or with our local Board of Aldermen reps. The public needs accurate information to address our concerns in this tumultuous time. How is our city and state addressing concerns of rising costs? People are giving up. Businesses are closing. Homes are being foreclosed. My neighbors moving away. Cutting back, not buying cars or new appliances, and grocery prices rising weekly. People uninformed. Are people subject to manipulation? Let's stop that and get them informed. Environmental. With curbs and likely loss of EPA, health of residents here is going to be impacted. The health of the Nogatuck River will be impacted. Air pollution will no doubt get worse, and the climate change will get worser. Can our state deep and city policies prevent some of those impacts? We've worked the last 30-plus years to clean the river. Do we want to lose it in a month? Federal funding cuts college students, and they're dropping out. I stand before you today because I graduated from college cum laude, top of my class. I was given the grant of full tuition scholarships. My parents had no funds to pay. I was the second person in our family since 1940s to be accepted at college. I was 10th in my high school class. My education has been invaluable, and I would not be standing here. I would not be a member of NVPEJ. I would not be Director of Social Advocacy, and I wouldn't advocate for our rights and brownfields and our environment without that education. I feel that our nation is founded upon equality and justice. Can our state, our cities, our colleges fill in the gaps? Is it in line with our guaranteed rights to limit college to the wealthy? We stand to lose great minds if we think only a millionaire's child should go to college. Our learned scientists, writers, peacekeepers, leaders since 1776 have not been just men of high socioeconomic status. They are all of us, and if I learned anything at Briar Cliff in my first week there, women have rights. And I'm concerned about that, because my right is now in jeopardy. Why? Because I don't have my maiden name attached to my married name. Why should I have to? I have a birth certificate, don't I? I stand before you. I have an education. Why should I have to worry about if I have a right to vote? What can our city and our state do to enforce women's rights? Social Security. I'm over the age of 60. We're threatened by confidential and personal data now provided to people without prior authorization or documented reasons. I worked three jobs to support my family. I paid into the system all of them and all of my life, and now I'm being told my benefits are in jeopardy? Is that legal? Funding for charitable organizations. LSA came out, Lutheran Service Agency or Association. I'm a member of the Lutheran Church. I know for a fact that organization has never stolen funds. It does not lie, and it didn't abuse its fundings. They respond to disasters worldwide. I challenge anyone who loses everything in a disaster, including loved ones, to not use services of first responders and charitable groups who help anyone. Data was posted without clarification of details. Where are the facts? Remember, for all of us, figures don't lie, but liars manipulate figures. I'm concerned about the tariffs, and please look into this. When we hear 25% tariffs, I don't think it stops there. You have to look at the costs from point of beginning to end point, and us, we, the people, are going to bear those taxes. If you haven't lived my life, you don't know what it's like to go hungry, or fear for your life, or never be able to climb to a better place. Why are you imposing unreasonable taxes upon me? We were told we would get a tax break. Now that's gone. Where do we go from here? City of Waterbury, State of Connecticut, what can you do to help us? And I thank Senator Murphy. And in closing, our-
That's time. We can finish up, finish up. That's time.
Thank you. Our Constitution, our Declaration of Independence, our Bill of Rights guarantees to every single one of us life, liberty, justice, equality, security, the voice to speak and not experience revenge, but rather help us to get to a better place. Whether your blue, green, white, brown isn't the issue, rich billionaire or lower socioeconomic level, child, youth, adult, we are all guaranteed rights in this democracy. Please, City of Waterbury, State of Connecticut, our reps and senators, support those precious and invaluable rights. Laws are laws for every one of us here, out there, and in our country. Thank you.
Next speaker from 178 Cook Street, Emma Taylor.
Good evening, Emma Taylor, 178 Cook Street. I drafted up this letter that I will be sending to the Office of the Mayor, the Street Department, and the Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen. I would like to present areas of concern in the Cook Street area. My first issue, I mentioned this a couple of years ago about restricting parking on the corner of Cook and Buckingham Streets. I was told there would be a traffic study, but I haven't seen any street or traffic study. What does this study look like? Traffic coming from the Buckingham to Cook, making a right turn going down Cook Street, makes you turn into oncoming traffic coming up Cook. Traffic turning left, going up Cook Street, can't see oncoming traffic because of SUVs or high-profile vehicles parked on the corner. My suggestion, especially for the winter season, is to turn Buckingham Street to a one-way going towards Pine Street, because Buckingham becomes an ice skating rink when it snows. Over the years, it's a fender-bender nightmare. I can stand in my living room and look at the cars just piled up right there in the bin of Cook and Buckingham. My second issue, and this is just my opinion, no parking signs should be added to the corners of the left side of Bishop and the right side of Pine Street. Cars parked on these corners make it difficult for the school bus to make a turn because of the cars parked along the wall of the Bishop Street entrance to Fulton Park. I walk every morning, so I witness it when the bus, buses, school buses are coming up Bishop Street and try to make that turn. So they try to turn, they back up. It's, it's not pretty, and they have to get our kids to school. The third issue, cars are passing on Cook Street like they're on the highway. The stop sign by 7-Eleven is ignored frequently. If you're attempting to make a left or a right turn onto Cook Street, coming down Greenwood Street, good luck. If the cars would make a full stop like they're supposed to, instead of running a train behind each other, you could make your turn. The only time they actually stop is to let traffic come out of Roseland, but once Roseland comes out, the rest of the cars just go right through. It's like it's a, it's not a full stop. They just plow right through behind it. And those are my issues for this session. Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Okay, thanks. And with that, the next item on the agenda is, will be a little, a quick presentation by Sarah Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. I think she did ask questions to be emailed. I'm not sure if she got any, but she's going to do a quick overview really quick, and we'll get on with our meeting. Sarah, thank you.
Good evening, Sarah Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. I'm here tonight, as President DG O'Vancarlow said, to give an update on the fiscal year 25 budget as requested previously by this board. I do prepare a monthly report and submit it to the board each month. With the exceptions of the months of July and August, there's one report for those two months. At that point in time, we're just starting up the new year and working on finishing up the old year, so there's one report issued. On your agenda tonight, the December monthly report is number 13, so when I'm referencing figures here, I'll be referencing those from that report. So in the December report, we have six months' worth of actual expenses and six months' worth of actual revenues, and then we have projections for the six months to come. That'll bring us to June 30 at the end of the fiscal year. As you may remember, the fiscal year 25 budget is in the total amount of $446.7 million. The December report projects a surplus of $458,931 at the end of the year. This is a function of having projected revenues of $449,857 over budget, while also having projected expenditures of $9,074 less than budget. The report is pretty conservative at this point in time, and we do expect by the end of the year that that projected surplus will end up being larger once we close out the books for the end of the fiscal year. The monthly report does focus on projections in our salary accounts in all of the different departments, and it assumes that all of the other expense accounts will be fully expended by the end of the year. But as you know, we usually do have savings in some of those other accounts by the time we get to the end of the year. The December report contained actual expenses of 13 bi-weekly payrolls and 25 weekly payrolls, leaving 13 bi-weekly payrolls left to be paid, as well as 27 weekly payrolls left through the end of the year. The report does include projections that vacant positions will be filled in various departments, but vacancies typically do generate some savings, as the hiring process does take some time. So while the positions are vacant, we are usually generating savings from those vacancies. And by year end, as I mentioned, there are also savings in many of the other expense accounts outside of the salary accounts. The report does contain revenue and expense summary pages at the beginning, and then more detailed information by department follows in the report. You see spreadsheets for each department. I would note that we have a contingency account of $1.5 million in our budget. The report does project that the entire account will be spent by the end of the year. This account is used to fund labor contracts that weren't settled at budget development time, and therefore salary increases wouldn't have been included in departmental budgets. It's also used to fund cost overruns in certain areas, as well as unexpected or emergency purchases that may come up during the year. So far, there have been no transfers from this account, and the full balance remains available at this point in time. The report does project that some departments may be over budget by year end, but as we prepare to close out the books at the end of the fiscal year, individual departments cannot end the year over budget. So at that point in time, we would bring transfers from the contingency account to this board for approval, and most of the time, that is related to salary accounts, sometimes when those contracts weren't settled at budget development time. Sometimes departments are actually able to cover some of those increases because they have some vacancies and turnover throughout the year. Something we do watch very closely throughout the year- Something we do watch very closely throughout the year are police and fire overtime accounts. Both departments currently have position vacancies, so they are both projected to be over budget in their overtime accounts by the end of the year, but currently savings in their regular salary accounts are projected to cover the overtime overages. Just to point out on the revenue side, as I mentioned, it is projected right now to be slightly over budget at the end of the year. Some areas that are projected to be performing, that are performing better than budget are investment income, town clerk, and building department revenue. Taxes, current tax collections are projected at 96.1% at this current point in time, and the report currently projects that we will not need to use any of the $3 million budget use of fund balance, which we haven't had to use in previous years. So that's an overview of where we are currently in fiscal year '25, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Any questions? Alderwomen and Aldermen.
No, I just have a comment. I appreciate you doing this. Thank you. It's nice to just have a touch base with you halfway through the year. Now that I'm talking, is there any way to clarify, short, in recap? If not, I can follow up with you after about. When you mentioned the fire and the police overages in overtime, but it's gonna be covered by... I'm not using the right word.
Sure.
Payroll. What is that?
Sure. So they generate savings in their regular salary accounts because they have vacancies, and that's why their overtime costs are higher, because, you know, filling shifts of the vacant positions. But in the report, on pages 27 and 28, you would see the specific information for the police and fire departments.
Okay.
But again, at this point in time, we are projecting that the overages in the overtime accounts will be covered by those salary savings. If, as we get closer to the end of the year, if something happens where that won't be the case, we do, as I mentioned, have the contingency account and could come to the board with a budget transfer, to transfer funding from contingency to the overtime accounts within those departments.
And then again, like you're meeting with these, all these departments every month, so is there anything that you foresee might be coming up at the end of the year that we should just keep our eyes open when we're looking at the new budget? Are there any concerns or?
I think right now, all of our departments operate fairly well within their budgets. I'm not anticipating any major problems as we close out the year. It would just be to, if there are small overages anywhere because of salary accounts, we would, I would submit that budget transfer to the board for approval at the end of the year, but so far, we don't see any major concerns as we're halfway through the year.
No, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Here are none. Sarah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the Wednesday, January 8th, 2025 special meeting, and the Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 public hearing and regular meeting. Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Mosley.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. There is no mayor report tonight. Before we recess into committees, item number 14 on your agenda was going to intergovernmental. That was incorrect, and that was, needs to go to Finance Committee, so the new agenda, I believe, shows that. But also, these budget transfers were supposed to be approved by the Board of Education on February 6th. Unfortunately, their meeting got snowed out, got canceled because of snow. So it's not something we normally do. We don't like doing it normally, but we're going to approve it tonight so that business can continue, and they will approve it on this Thursday at their meeting. So it's just a budget transfer so that the elevators can, and they can get their work done, but nothing happens until both bodies approve it. So that's item 14 is going to Finance. And then item number 25, item 25, there was, it was said to be a contract with Post University for Student Intern Program, an internship agreement. That was not the correct, not the correct title. So what it is, is it is a contract with Rich to Success for environmental work. The contract is there in front of you. So it's with, it's to work with a government contract for $252,410, and it was for homes, city water, lead, and healthy homes and public works will support community engagement, outreach, and education on recycling, lead, and asbestos. So that is the actual packet. It's been reflected on the new agenda, and it's on your cover page now and in your agenda as the correct thing to do. So that is all corrected. Is there any questions? All right. Here are none. We will recess into committees, and we'll start with Finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order. Item number 11, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following refunds, December. Alpha and Omega Ministries, $1,968.81. Tiffany A. Wilson, $2,200, for a total of $4,168.81. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second? Second on the motion. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following refunds. Fern Street LLC, $6,747.09. Andrew Sirica, $2,500. Total, $9,247.09. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second? Second on the motion. Is there discussion?
Alderman, just use your mic. Turn the mic on so they can hear you at home. Thank you.
Talking to committee members. Is this the fees paid for permits? What exactly are these refunds from?
Do?
Caused?
Do we have someone that can answer that question?
Anybody knows what this is?
I can get that information for you.
I recommend we table it till we know what we're doing.
So it appears that they're, they look like to be their bill adjustment credits?
Their what?
It appears that they're bill adjustment credits that were approved by the-
That was my question. Is it refunds? Is it refunds?
So these refunds were, these were bill adjustments that were approved by the, what's the committee? I'm sorry. Commission, Board of Public Works approved them, and these are the refunds that they are getting back. So on number, at least on number 11, that is, and number 12 is, appears to be, obviously, again, by the, approved by the Public Works, the refunds, I would assume, for the same reasons, but I will, we will get a better explanation from now on, Alderman Alfsef. It's a little bit vague here.
Looks like, that's, you know.
Yes.
It looks like payments to the Water Bureau, Water Pollution Control. Looking at item number 12.
Item number 12 is what? Alderman, I'm sorry.
Right. It looks, it appears as though it's payments to the Bureau of Water and Water Pollution Control.
Right.
Yeah. One, I mean, the second one is an overpayment. So they're refunding an overpayment on the second one, but-
Item number 12 specifically, correct?
Item, yeah. Item number 12, you could see the second one's an overpayment. They reimbursed them, but-
With Andrew, with Andrew Sirica, it's an overpayment.
Yep.
Yep. With Fern Street LLC, owner setup recurring payments.
Yeah, but it's sitting here as a, I'm not sure what that means, so I think that Alderman Alfsef's correct.
It would definitely be related to water and sewer fees in regards to overpayments that are being refunded.
Okay. So what we'll do is-
I don't have the backup in front of me in regards to whether it was driven directly by an overpayment or a bill adjustment.
Okay. That we don't know.
Okay. Didn't mean to interrupt your meeting there, but we'll, we'll definitely have to get a better explanation on some of these, so thank you.
Okay. So we'll table that?
Sure. No, 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 no. Take it up. Take it up. Their, 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 their credits and reimbursements are already approved by the Public Works, so we're fine. Yeah.
Okay. So we are fine?
Yes. We'll just make sure in the future that they're much better explained to us.
Okay. Okay. So we're asking for, did we already approve? Did we already get a motion to approve?
There was a motion. It was second.
And it was second? Okay. Therefore, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor vote, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say nay?
I can see that.
Any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain because I assume I don't know what I'm talking about when I don't have the information.
It's fine.
Okay. Okay. The motion passes. Item number 14, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer from the City Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $1,041,894, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Management, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Now, the Standing Committee, tax overpayments. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $11,239.96, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second on the motion. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Therefore, the motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. So I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, starting with item number two. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a professional services agreement with Automated Logic Contracting Service, Inc., for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of $488,294.40, for preventative maintenance services to the building management system at various schools, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. And I should say that items number two and three were both approved at the Board of Ed meeting on January 16th, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number three, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract with News LLC under RFP number 8273, in the not-to-exceed amount of $74,830, to provide demolition of a portable addition at Woodrow Wilson Elementary School, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me.
Good evening. Nick Albini, Chief Operating Officer, Waterbury Public Schools.
Hi, Mr. Albini. Thank you. I just had a question. It says they were the most responsible bidder. Well, I guess my first question I had was, what is a portable addition when we're in reference to Woodrow Wilson School?
So in the rear of the school are the portable units, they're modulars, they're temporary. They've outlived their usefulness. They weren't properly installed in the first place, where they're bringing up water from the ground, a lot of mold inside, roof leaks. It's supposed to be used as temporary, but it's been there for 27, 28 years now. It is a health hazard, so this company is, was the lowest bidder, and they provided some extras for us, as well as there are some exhaust units up on the roof that are still useful for us, and he is willing to take those down and bring us, bring them to Harper Avenue for us.
So what happens in the portable units? Do we teach, or what do we?
They were teaching classrooms. They were not good, and it was not a good environment. At the beginning of the school year, over the summer, we moved all of the teaching classrooms into the main building.
So now the population in the main building is at its capacity, or what do we look like in the building?
The only thing that we really lost out on was some storage, and that's what we're working on now. There are some rooms that could be refurbished, and we've picked up already some storage units for the principal there.
Okay. And does News do any other business with us? Have they done any projects?
This is the first time I've used them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number three? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number four, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen not disapprove the appointment of Ryan Gary to the Bureau of Assessment, as submitted by Michael D. Joe Von Carlo, President of the Board of Aldermen. Can I get a motion to not disapprove?
Motion to not disapprove.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Can someone answer how long this vacancy's been open? I don't, it says vacant online, but I don't know if it's just because someone had resigned and Ryan's coming in, and then... So I was reading online to try to educate myself about what this bureau does, right? So if you can try to just help fill in the blanks, like I know that they assess properties, but are these three residents that go on and assess properties, or do they work with our assessor's office? Do they work with a consultant? Like, how does, how do these all play into assessing a piece of property?
It's, what happens is there's usually three people on that board.
Sorry. Just your name? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Angela Giuliani, Corporation Counsel for the City of Waterbury. And I'm not, I can't give the exact date of the appointment. I could get back to you on that. I vaguely heard you ask that question when I was sitting. And usually, people will come before the board if they have any issues with the assessments for certain items, but it's not, it's not the assessment board for the appeals for your taxes. So it may be other issues that they, they look at, but it's not an appeals board, if that's what you were wondering.
Right. And Ryan Gary's amazing, right? But he's an employee of the city, right? Are there any other city employees that are in here? Joseph Cirillo or Jeray Cabbage? I'm sorry if I'm butchering that name.
I do not believe the other two are employees, but I could look into that and get back to you also.
And is that okay per our charter, to have city employees being on a board such as that?
I don't believe that it violates the charter, no.
Okay.
But I can certainly look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number four? Thank you. All those in favor to not disapprove, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number seven, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen not disapprove the following individuals to the following boards and commissions under unrestricted appointments. Civil Service Commission, Angela Abar, 1125 to 123128. Fair Rent Commission, Evelyn Devon, 1125 to 123128. Finance and Audit Review Commission, Paul Bozelli, 1125 to 123128. Dennis Buckley, 1125 to 123128. Jay Trevetti, 1125, 123128. Human Rights Commission, Tucker Beckett, 1124 to 123127. Human Rights Commission, Tucker Beckett, 1124 to 123127. Under restricted appointments, the Board of Assessment Appeals, Carol Anne LaFriere, 1125, 123128. And Fair Rent Commission, Gabriel Rodriguez, 1125 to 123128. Can I get a motion to not disapprove?
Motion to not disapprove.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 16. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a contract between the City of Waterbury and Murphy Pipeline Contractors LLC for the purpose of constructing the third water transmission main rehabilitation slip lining under ITB number 7978 project in the amount of $12,319,450.50 as submitted by Bradley Malay, Acting Superintendent of Water. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Bradley Malay, Bureau of Water.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Got a question. Is it, the money that I see here, does this money be bonded for, for that, from the city?
Yep, and it's part of a SRF project through the state of Connecticut.
Okay. That'll be for now, thank you, appreciate it.
Any further discussion on item number 16? Alderman Zimmerman.
Hello, how are you? What is, did you say SRF?
It's the State Revolving Fund, which is, it's a, it's a matching fund up to 50%, up to 3 million. It's a low-interest loan through the state of Connecticut that has different payback periods for utilities, and most utilities utilize that fund to do major capital projects.
Okay, and then I just see you're the Acting Superintendent of Water. Did the superintendent step down, or is he just not here?
He retired.
Okay, thank you. It's nice to have you, welcome to the team here. Who is on, when I was reading it, there was a committee that approves this. Who, like, not name-wise, but position-wise, like, what does that committee consist of?
It's the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, city engineer, construction manager, and then the next-ranking construction official in the Water, Bureau of Water.
Okay.
On this project, it changes to, for other projects.
And then, I just have a finance question, I don't know if it's gonna go directly to you, but like, the bonds that we pull from the city, I don't know, Mr. LeBlanc, if you can pipe in in case I'm not asking the right person, but like, so we have a, we've approved bonds as a Board of Alderman for certain projects, see the Chase Building, right? And we haven't used that money yet, and it's been a little bit. So, do these funds kind of like play into one another in a big bucket? Or are they completely separate and our bond that we pulled over here cannot be used over here? Like, how does that work?
They are completely separate, and these bonds will be repaid by the user fees within the Water, the Water Enterprise System. And as Brad had mentioned, there is a, an approved application through the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. It provides for a 2% loan over 20 years. So, we actually will be using the bond authorization that was previously approved as a mechanism in order to essentially borrow or participate in this loan program as opposed to actually issuing bonds. And additionally, that Drinking Water Revolving Program provides, as Brad mentioned, a reimbursement up to 50%. Unfortunately, there is a cap, I believe it's 1.5 million per project.
Okay.
But, and the, whether it be a bond or this loan, we won't actually close on either of those until we're well into the project and have been incurring the costs. And that's generally when we time out the financing for the bond authorizations that have been approved.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Will this be increase on, on water for the citizens of Waterbury with this bond?
Their water rate?
Mm-hmm.
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
No.
It could be.
Off my head, I don't know.
Got it, well, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 16? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstention? The motion passes. Item number 17. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a state government relations consulting services agreement with Powers, Griffin, and Hill LLC as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
How are we doing?
Good evening.
I want to understand this concept of having a consulting company to do what for the city?
So, they, they serve from a government relations standpoint of working with legislators, the governor's office, in relation to various bills that are proposed. This legislative session is off to a flying start, there's hundreds of proposed bills that are out there, and the city really needs to be sensitive to bills that could have negative implications on the city from the standpoint of either resulting in additional costs that would be borne by the city's taxpayers, resulting in potential reductions in the taxable grant list for the City of Waterbury, and other situations that could result essentially in unfunded mandates. So, this company, again, serves as, well, they serve in multiple capacities of monitoring the bills, monitoring when public hearings are being set on those bills, coordinating with the respective departments here in the city that may be impacted by those bills, whether it be the Department of Education, the Police Department, certainly on the tax and assessment side, which we're closely tied to. And then, again, the coordination, once the bills, if they get out of committee and are ultimately brought to the floor, it's then again that coordination with our delegation as well as other legislators and leadership at the state.
You see, to me, to be this, first of all, we haven't used them before, right? This is the first, we have used them before?
Yep.
My question to this is, isn't that, that's why we have state reps with aides to help us with the administration to go to do this, instead of hiring someone to be a liaison between two people that should be communicating against each other? So, we're using taxpayers' money to do something that an elected official has been elected for that purpose, to communicate with the administration in that city, to use this instead of using a consulting company? You know, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, we're using $54,000 a year for these services, am I right?
Yes, it's a monthly retainer of $4,500.
Yeah, I think taxpayers' money should not be spent on someone for a job that someone was elected to do, between a state rep and administration, city administration.
Again, to the comments that I conveyed, you know, the issue is, it's a volume thing. There are so many bills at the end of the day, and it's, you know, it's a combination of tracking and, you know, making sure at the end of the day, to the greatest extent possible, that something doesn't fall through the cracks and ultimately end up for a vote, and everybody's not on the same page as far as what the prerogative is of the city or one of its departments, again, to protect the city's interests at the end of the day.
But, again, to me, that's why we have five state reps and their aides to look into all these things that are going through, that it's gonna affect the city, and it's gonna affect any department in the city. So, for us to be using $54,000 a year for somebody that it's gonna be, has to be doing their job, I don't think it should be money that we spend, we spend. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Further discussion on item number 17? Alderman Zimmerman.
I do believe that it's an important role, but I almost feel like it should live either in the city or like Reuben or Alderman Rodriguez was saying, at the state level. What did we use this consulting firm for in the past?
For these similar services, it's the, the fee was under the $50,000 contract threshold previously. With this RFP, the respondent came in with an annual fee of $54,000, so it required, you know, the contract to be established and brought before this board for consideration.
So, this is something we've been doing for years, multiple years?
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a few years, yes.
And it's been successful since we want to continue? Or have we ever considered bringing that into a city payroll position, or?
I can't say that, it has been considered from that standpoint. It's, it's, the services have bode well for the city in prior years in the dealings I've been involved with, you know, certainly the former mayor was supportive of this program and utilizing these services, again, really to, at the end of the day, help protect the interests of the city. An example I can give you, there was a bill that was passed in the last legislative session that resulted in how motor vehicles are priced on the grant list, and the most recent grant list is a result of this bill that did get passed, ultimately had an impact of significantly reducing the grant list value on our motor vehicles. You know, so, that is a topic of discussion that we'll be furthering in this legislative session to see, you know, if there may be appetite for relooking at that bill.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 17? Great, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 18. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an engineering agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and Prime Consulting, Inc. as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me.
Roy Kavanaugh, City Engineer.
Hello, Mr. Kavanaugh, how are you?
Life is good.
The on-call, can you, we have these conversations often when we see on-call votes for on-call services, but can you explain what on-call is? Is it overnight, when we don't have payroll employees on? Is it because we're, our bandwidth is full and we need extra help?
No, generally, the on-call contracts are designed for engineering and design services. It could be inspection, it could be for design, could be services. It's a designated task where the staff doesn't have the city to perform, where the city doesn't have the staff to particular form or design or carry out a particular project, or we don't have the time or the resources or the particular expertise. So, by on-call, what it does is, having a standardized contract, we have rates established and we have a contract terms established, so all we have to do is negotiate the specific project scope and fee and expedite the service. It's a more efficient way of delivering professional services, rather than going out for an individual advertisement and then the selection process and then the contract process. Is that, is your question?
It does, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 18? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 19. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and Landmark Architects, PC, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Real quick. How many of these companies we have?
Roy Kavanaugh, City Engineer.
How many companies we have already on-call?
The original selection list, we had 22 different firms providing virtually every engineering and architectural service we could think of that we were gonna need or we had needed over the last couple of years. We prioritized the list, and we're in the process of finalizing that list now. I believe one or two of them did not accept our contract terms, so the total list is somewhere around 20 or 21 at this time.
And none of them would get charged unless they're called in for a service?
Excuse me?
None of them will be charging the city unless they're on-call for a service?
Right, they have a specific task order, they have a scope of work, and they have a specific fee at the end of the day.
Okay. No problem, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 19? Alderman Zimmerman.
I do just have a question, where are the rates? I'm looking at all these, like, I missed the last agenda item, but for this agenda item, are there rates that are in this contract?
Yes, there are, each of the contracts has got a rate proposition. The principal's got a specific rate, senior engineer, that sort of thing, they're all buried in the contract, yes. We agreed to the rates and we agreed to the BFO.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussions? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay?
I don't see the rates, so I don't know what to vote on.
The rates?
Are you, item 20?
Right now, it's item...
Item number 19.
19?
Yeah, in the back of the pack, it should be, hold on.
There's a section, section six is compensation and limitation of payments. Might be an additional document there in the back, probably. Do you have it in the digital attachments? Do you see it there?
We'll stand at ease for a second, while you guys figure out, we'll stand at ease.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Your Intergovernmental Committee, or item number twenty-two. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and RHS Consulting Design, LLC, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Just a reminder.
Roy Kavanaugh, City Engineer.
Just, I just want to remind where this project's going on right now, where they're doing this project.
This is for the, excuse me, this is for the raised grant, a constructibility review as a third part outside of review of the construction plans, documents, cost estimates, specifications, kind of like a value engineering thing, and we're also taking a look at whether it makes sense, it's most practical to be built. Due to the complexity of the project, particularly the environmental concerns and the rights-of-way issues, which you have to go to a third party also because the DOT has told us that they're no longer going to be doing rights-of-way activities, we negotiated with the Federal Highway Administration, who's funding the project, to take another look at the whole thing, another design submission, if you will, to make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-three? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-five, which was resubmitted with corrections to identify Waterbury Bridge to Success as the subcontract. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a subcontract with Waterbury Bridge to Success, as submitted by Alba Nalam, Director of Community Strategy. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Weaver.
Good evening, Alba Nalam, Director of Community Strategy.
Good evening. In the contract, it says that Bridge to Success will be working with Waterbury Lead and Happy Homes. Will the Health Department be involved with it also? I know that's a committee of, part of the Health Department. Will the whole Health Department be involved with it?
Yes. The entire Health Department is part of the process, so the idea was to have an inter-collaboration between the City of Waterbury departments and a community provider such as Bridge to Success. So yes, the entire Health Department is part of this. Specifically, the Healthy Homes, it's the part that will help with the project, making the scope of work more applicable to them, but of course, the Health Director is part of the project.
Okay. What about the environmental asbestos? Who will they be working with on that level?
So the Healthy Home falls under the environmental section of the Health Department, so it's covered under that section. So that we include not just lead, but also the asbestos removal.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-five? Alderman Zimmerman.
Hello, how are you? I'm just trying to understand, so when I, when I've done volunteer with Bridge to Success, it's been like backpack giveaways and things like that, so I thought it was very like school and child oriented? So this is a out-of-school, out-of-child scope project, or?
The role of Bridge to Success will be providing the outreach components to the community, because we do have children, they are part of the neighborhood and the geographical location we're going to be working with. We thought to work with an organization that has a good reputation and is able to provide its proven record in terms of the community engagement piece. So it's engaging the entire family, and it's not just the children, but also the parents are part of the family.
Okay, and then this vote is to approve a grant of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars that we've been awarded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-five? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and RHS Consulting Design, LLC, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me.
Roy Kavanaugh, City Engineer.
Just, I just want to remind where this project's going on right now, where they're doing this project.
This is for the, excuse me, this is for the raised grant, a constructibility review as a third part outside of review of the construction plans, documents, cost estimates, specifications, kind of like a value engineering thing, and we're also taking a look at whether it makes sense, it's most practical to be built. Due to the complexity of the project, particularly the environmental concerns and the rights-of-way issues, which you have to go to a third party also because the DOT has told us that they're no longer going to be doing rights-of-way activities, we negotiated with the Federal Highway Administration, who's funding the project, to take another look at the whole thing, another design submission, if you will, to make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-three? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a LOTCIP application for West Main Street Waterbury Signal Upgrade between the City of Waterbury and the Noctis Valley Council of Governments, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Just a reminder. Just, I just want to remind where this project's going on right now, where they're doing this project.
This is for the, excuse me, this is for the raised grant, a constructibility review as a third part outside of review of the construction plans, documents, cost estimates, specifications, kind of like a value engineering thing, and we're also taking a look at whether it makes sense, it's most practical to be built. Due to the complexity of the project, particularly the environmental concerns and the rights-of-way issues, which you have to go to a third party also because the DOT has told us that they're no longer going to be doing rights-of-way activities, we negotiated with the Federal Highway Administration, who's funding the project, to take another look at the whole thing, another design submission, if you will, to make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-three? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-five, which was resubmitted with corrections to identify Waterbury Bridge to Success as the subcontract. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a subcontract with Waterbury Bridge to Success, as submitted by Alba Nalam, Director of Community Strategy. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Weaver.
Good evening, Alba Nalam, Director of Community Strategy.
Good evening. In the contract, it says that Bridge to Success will be working with Waterbury Lead and Happy Homes. Will the Health Department be involved with it also? I know that's a committee of, part of the Health Department. Will the whole Health Department be involved with it?
Yes. The entire Health Department is part of the process, so the idea was to have an inter-collaboration between the City of Waterbury departments and a community provider such as Bridge to Success. So yes, the entire Health Department is part of this. Specifically, the Healthy Homes, it's the part that will help with the project, making the scope of work more applicable to them, but of course, the Health Director is part of the project.
Okay. What about the environmental asbestos? Who will they be working with on that level?
So the Healthy Home falls under the environmental section of the Health Department, so it's covered under that section. So that we include not just lead, but also the asbestos removal.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-five? Alderman Zimmerman.
Hello, how are you? I'm just trying to understand, so when I, when I've done volunteer with Bridge to Success, it's been like backpack giveaways and things like that, so I thought it was very like school and child oriented? So this is a out-of-school, out-of-child scope project, or?
The role of Bridge to Success will be providing the outreach components to the community, because we do have children, they are part of the neighborhood and the geographical location we're going to be working with. We thought to work with an organization that has a good reputation and is able to provide its proven record in terms of the community engagement piece. So it's engaging the entire family, and it's not just the children, but also the parents are part of the family.
Okay, and then this vote is to approve a grant of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars that we've been awarded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-five? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a LOTCIP application for West Main Street Waterbury Signal Upgrade between the City of Waterbury and the Noctis Valley Council of Governments, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Roy Kavanaugh, City Engineer.
Just, I just want to remind where this project's going on right now, where they're doing this project.
This is for the, excuse me, this is for the raised grant, a constructibility review as a third part outside of review of the construction plans, documents, cost estimates, specifications, kind of like a value engineering thing, and we're also taking a look at whether it makes sense, it's most practical to be built. Due to the complexity of the project, particularly the environmental concerns and the rights-of-way issues, which you have to go to a third party also because the DOT has told us that they're no longer going to be doing rights-of-way activities, we negotiated with the Federal Highway Administration, who's funding the project, to take another look at the whole thing, another design submission, if you will, to make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-three? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and BSC Group, Inc., as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-two. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and RHS Consulting Design, LLC, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-one. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and RHS Consulting Design, LLC, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Just a reminder. Just, I just want to remind where this project's going on right now, where they're doing this project.
This is for the, excuse me, this is for the raised grant, a constructibility review as a third part outside of review of the construction plans, documents, cost estimates, specifications, kind of like a value engineering thing, and we're also taking a look at whether it makes sense, it's most practical to be built. Due to the complexity of the project, particularly the environmental concerns and the rights-of-way issues, which you have to go to a third party also because the DOT has told us that they're no longer going to be doing rights-of-way activities, we negotiated with the Federal Highway Administration, who's funding the project, to take another look at the whole thing, another design submission, if you will, to make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number twenty-three? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number twenty-four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a LOTCIP application for West Main Street Waterbury Signal Upgrade between the City of Waterbury and the Noctis Valley Council of Governments, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Just a reminder. Just, I just want to remind where this project's going on right now, where they're doing this project.
Your Intergovernmental Committee, or item number 22. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the City of Waterbury and Silver Petricelli and Associates, Inc., as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 23. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an amendment number one to engineer agreement for W A T E R project Phase Two Engineering Services Constructibility Review Component One between City and M and J Engineering, PC, in the amount of $98,457.55, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Just, I just want to remind where this project's going on right now, where they're doing this project.
This is for the, excuse me, this is for the RACE grant, a constructibility review as a third part outside of review of the construction plans, documents, cost estimates, specifications, kind of like a value engineering thing, and we're also taking a look at whether it makes sense, it's most practical to be built. Due to the complexity of the project, particularly the environmental concerns and the rights of way issues, which you have to go to a third party also because the DOT has told us that they're no longer going to be doing rights-of-way activities. We negotiated with the Federal Highway Administration, who's funding the project, to take another look at the whole thing, another design submission, if you will, to make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Okay. That'll my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 23? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Item number 24. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a LOTCIP application for West Main Street Waterbury Signal Upgrade between the City of Waterbury and the Noctic Valley Council of Governments, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, Project Manager, DPW. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number 25, which was resubmitted with corrections to identify Waterbury Bridge to Success as the subcontract. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a subcontract with Waterbury Bridge to Success, as submitted by Albaana Lem, Director of Community Strategy. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Weaver.
Good evening, Albaana Lem, Director of Community Strategy.
Good evening. In the contract, it says that Bridge to Success will be working with Waterbury Lead and Happy Homes. Will the Health Department be involved with it also? I know that's a committee of, part of the Health Department. Will the whole Health Department be involved with it?
Yes. The entire Health Department is part of the process. So, the idea was to have an inter collaboration between the City of Waterbury departments and a community provider such as Bridge to Success. So, yes, the entire Health Department is part of this. Specifically, the Healthy Homes, it's the part that will help with the project, making the scope of work more applicable to them.
Okay. What about the environmental asbestos? Who will they be working with on that level?
So, the Healthy Home falls under the environmental section of the Health Department, so it's covered under that section. So, that we include not just lead, but also the asbestos removal.
Any further discussion on item number 25? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Hello, how are you? I'm just trying to understand, so when I've done volunteer with Bridge to Success, it's been like backpack giveaways and things like that. So, I thought it was very like school and child oriented. So, this is a out-of-school, out-of-child scope project, or?
The role of Bridge to Success will be providing the outreach components to the community, because we do have children, they are part of the neighborhood, and the geographical location we're going to be working with, we thought to work with an organization that has good reputation and is able to provide its proven record in terms of the community engagement piece. So, it's engaging the entire family, and it's not just the children, but also the parents are part of the family.
Okay. And then this vote is to approve a grant of $252,000 that we've been awarded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 25? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee.
Some of.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay. With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is receiving place on file. Item number two is on consent to approve. Items three and four are on consent to approve. Items five and six are receiving place on file. Item seven is on consent to approve. Items eight and nine are receiving place on file. Item number 10 is receiving place on file. Items number 11, 12, 13, and 14 are, excuse me, items 11 and 12 are on consent to approve. Item 13 is receiving place on file. Item 14 is on consent to approve. Item 15 is receiving place on file. Items number 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 are on consent to approve. Items 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 are on consent to approve. Item number 26 is receiving place on file, and item number 27 is receiving place on file. Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Any discussion? Any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Alderman Rodriguez.
Can we take out 16 and 17?
Anything further? Hold on. Alderden Alsaf.
I'd like the record to show that on item number 12, I abstained in committee. I am going to remove that abstention and change it to an approval.
Okay.
Because I've been given the information necessary to make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The motion on the floor now is to approve the consent calendar as read, minus items number 16 and 17. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just a discussion on a finance piece, because I'm part of the consent calendar. The refunds were due to overpayments of water, right?
Correct.
It says on here, but it's water, right? So, I didn't understand.
So, overpayments to water, one appeared to have a, he set himself up, they set himself for an automatic payment that they didn't realize never stopped, and that is why that refund came to that one.
Okay.
And the other two were adjustments. The items 11 were adjustments, item 12 was a refunds because of overpayments.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep. Okay. So, with respect to item number, wait, excuse me, I don't know if we got a vote on that now, because I got, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. With respect to item number 16, the Chair would recognize Alderman Tajaldeen, the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number 16. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract between the City of Waterbury and Murphy Pipeline Contractors, LLC, for the purpose of constructing the Third Water Transmission Main Rehabilitation Slip Lining under ITB Number 7978 project, in the amount of $12,319,450.50, as submitted by Bradley Malley, Acting Superintendent of Water.
Alderwoman Martinez, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, and, excuse me, by Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, and seconded by Alderwoman Weaver. Any discussion? Alderden Rodriguez.
I pulled this apart, because first of all, it's $12 million, so, and we haven't got an answer if taxpayers are going to be, the rate of the water and taxpayers are going to go up due to the fact that we're going to use this money. For that reason, I'm going to vote no for this project.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving item number 16, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
Okay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and item 16 is approved. Deborah, were you able to get the no's? Excuse me, Deborah? Were you able to record the no's? Okay.
We do a roll call.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. Let's do a roll call. I apologize, everybody. So, roll call, vote for item number 16. Excuse me. Been a while on those.
Alderman Alsaf.
No.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain. Alderman Rinaldi.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
No.
Alderman Salvia.
Yes.
Alderman Tajaldeen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
No.
Alderman Di Giovincarlo.
Yes.
10 yes, 3 no.
Okay. Motion carries. Item 16 is approved. With respect to item 17, the Chair would recognize Alderman Tajaldeen, the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number 17. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a state government relations consulting services agreement with Powers, Griffin, and Hill, LLC, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those, discussion?
Yes. To all my colleagues, I don't think we should be passing a bill like this one. So, you know, this job is done through our state reps. We're using $54,000 for a consulting company to do the job that is supposed to be done by our elected officials and their aides. So, we could use that money for something else than paying a consulting company to do the work that is supposed to be done by an elected official and their aides and this body and the administration. So, one of the reasons that I'm voting no for this one is because we should not be spending $54,000 a year for a consulting company to do the job that is supposed to be done by an elected official. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Mosley.
Yes, through you, Mr. President. So, I do think it's important that we have someone on the ground, and, you know, individuals who are able to work with, work through and work with our state legislatures, not only our state legislatures, but also different entities that work within state government, to look at issues that specifically affect Waterbury. I think with everything going on right now, it's important that we keep a close eye on the changes. And I don't think hiring a consulting firm to do this work negates the hard work that our legislators do each and every day. So, I will be voting in favor of it, and I encourage my colleagues to do so as well.
Alderman Alsaf.
I think it's kind of redundant on this being, we do have state representatives up there that are supposed to be representing the city and its taxpayers, but we also belong to the Conference of Municipalities, which is supposed to be doing the same type of thing, looking out for what's going on for the cities and having a coalition of people to be able to say, this isn't good, this is bad, this is better, whatever. And I know there's other groups that we belong to that do similar things. So, I really think that it's redundant that we're going to take that money, $4,500 a month, to do jobs that are, should be done already by other people. So, I'll be voting no for it, and, you know, it's someplace we have to start. $4,500 a month is enough to start saying we can't do this all the time.
Alderman Mosley.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize the point. So, you know, this, this group and these consultants would not only be communicating with our delegation, but the entire state legislature. And I think it's important that we have individuals who are trained, who are experienced, to work with these different entities, to make sure that they're looking out for the interest of our city. I think $54,000 in the context of our budget is a sum that we can afford to make sure that our interests are protected at the state level. I think there's too much happening. There are too many issues. There are too many laws. There are too many potential bills that never even get to the floor that we have to keep an eye on, and I think it's bigger than just our delegation. Our delegation does a great job, but there's several, several moving parts in our state legislature, and that we definitely need to have someone and to have a group that is equipped to handle that task. And again, I think the amount that we're paying is reasonable, given the return we get on our investment.
Alderman Rodriguez.
So, with the respect of my colleague, so, we as a body here, that means that if we want to hire a consulting company to do the work that Aldermans do all the time, and it's a lot of work to manage a big city like this one, and the same thing happens in the state, and that's why we have elected officials to do that job. And that's why we should not be spending, with the economy how it is today and day, we should not be spending all that kind of money just to have a consulting company do the job that, or that our elected officials with their aides should be doing for us, and to be communicating with the administration at us in this body to get the job done. That's why we all are here, to help our communities, to reach out to our communities and everybody else. For that matter, we should not be spending, we should be watching every penny that we spend in this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Tajaldeen.
I think just as a point of context, two things. I seem to remember last year, we spent about three months talking about our city budget, and I recall an article in the Republican American saying that we all wish we had staff support to be more thorough in our job. And that's why we could not come up with a counterproposal or a counter-budget, because we don't have the time in combination with being the legislative body of the city and having our day jobs and our families and our friends, that we were looking for a little bit of extra help, right? I think this is a contract with the city. It's not a contract with the Connecticut General Assembly. This is so that we have, we would also benefit from these eyes and ears in Hartford. It's not like we're trying to subcontract out legislative work for our legislators who do have aides, and they're monitoring those bills, right? This is for the city to have a direct line of contact with a lot of the bills. I was talking to some, to our town clerk last week, and she said there's something like over 75 bills that might affect the town clerk. The bill trackers are going off the record every time there's a session, because there's so many moving pieces, right? It's an extra pair of eyes. It doesn't include fringe and retirement and pensions, right? There's a, so there's a cost savings there, rather than us hiring a legislative aide locally for Hartford. But I do think, you know, if people are asking, if we are asking for an extra set of eyes, we should be mindful of the times we have asked for an extra set of eyes to help us do our work, which we don't have, right? So, let's pay it forward and at least cover it on one side. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. I'm sorry. Alderman Mosley.
Sorry. I just want to emphasize the fact that, and with all due respect to my colleagues, I think, and I truly value the work that we do on a local level, but I think it's unfair to compare the work that a local city Board of Aldermen or city council does to an entire state legislature, and the amount of legislation that potentially comes up in a given session. And I definitely think that we need to have people on the ground that are equipped to work with not only our delegation, but the entire legislature and all the different entities and moving components of state government.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
I just wish we had this much discussion on our budget and all of our big-ticketed items. That's my comment.
I think we have. I think we have on a few of them, so. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Yes. Alderman Alsaf. Alderwoman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain. Alderman Rinaldi.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez.
No.
Alderman Salvia.
Yes.
Alderman Tajaldeen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
No.
Alderman Di Giovincarlo.
Yes.
10 yes, 3 no.
Okay. Motion carries, and item 17 is approved. With respect to standing, the Chair would recognize Alderman Salvia, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills, in the amount of $11,239.96, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Mosley.
Second on the motion.
Seconded by Alderman Rinaldi. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the refunds, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the refunds are approved. That is our business for the evening. Is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Alsaf.
I'm going to bring up my regular meeting complaints. We haven't heard anything about what's going on with Sacred Heart, that hurry up and get it done, because we needed it done over a year ago, and nothing's happened since. There's been no progress, as far as I could tell driving by anyways, as to doing anything, or haven't heard anything about any funding coming about to refurbish the school, when the sale of the rectory is going to take place in the convent, when the church is going to be refurbished enough so that we can have the confidence it might still be there next week. I mean, the place is crumbling, and when we were in there, I can only imagine what another year did to it. So, once again, I'm asking for some solid answers as to what's going on, not just that we're still looking into it. We had promises made to us when we were coerced into purchasing the building, and nothing's taken place since. I'd like to have some answers. And my second complaint that comes up every time is the tax-exempt properties. I still haven't received a list of them. I still have not received any plans as to what we're going to do to try to correct the list for those that have lost their tax exemption and still are not paying. I'd still like to see some of that information given to us so that we have something to work with, and we can say that we're being responsible with the city's money. Thank you.
Thank you. And as always, I will reach out again to the proper channels and tell them your concerns. And number two, we do have a new assessor. He was finally in place, and he's been in place now, and something that we'll reach out and ask him to, if you can put together a list for you, and so that you'll have that list, and, you know, and I know there's a question on timeframe when a, when a property does come off of, you know, from the tax exemption, so.
Thank you.
We'll get on both of those. Anything else? Alderman Tajaldeen.
Just an appreciation. This past weekend, we had Winters the Pits down in Hamilton Park, Booley Manor Neighborhood Association. Every year for the past six years, we've done the smores for the event, and the city's always really efficient to work with. We had, we ran into an issue where we couldn't find a location to do the smores, and Joe Geary really helped us get a spot. And so, Booley Manor says, thanks for hosting the event. We look forward to it every year. And next year, everyone come and get smores, because it's a lot of fun. And they're only a dollar. They might go up next year, because chocolate's really expensive, but we're trying to keep costs pretty low, so I appreciate it.
Alderman Rodriguez, excuse me.
No problem. One of the biggest things that we know, we have been having some snow coming, and the parking ban has been active, but not, I would like to hear from the Public Works or the Chief of Police to implement the parking bans, because we're having issues, at least in my district, I don't know other districts, but we're having issues, people parking in both sides of the streets. And I know our Public Works workers, they work pretty hard, day and night, and when we don't deal with these parking bans, people are going to park whenever they want. And plows are pretty big to go through a small street and not having those parking bans. So, I would like to have the Public Works Director and the Chief to explain why we are not implementing the parking ban ordinance.
Okay. And then you're also always welcome to reach out to the Chief at any time, as you know. Open door. Obviously, that and people throwing the snow right back into street. Once Public Works has done a great job, right off their cars and off their driveways, so. Alderman Mosley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognition. So, February is Black History Month, where we honor the contributions in the history of African-Americans. Next Wednesday, on February 19th, we're having our annual African-American Mayor for a Day Ceremony. It will take place here at City Hall and Veterans Memorial Hall, beginning at 10:00 a.m. with the flag raising. This year, the African-American for a Day is Ms. Irene Saunders, who's worked very hard in our community, helping several people, and is just really well-deserving of the honor. There's also a reception in the evening at the Mount Olive AM Zion Church on Pearl Street, which begins at 6:00 p.m. So, we invite everyone to come out, and congratulations to Ms. Saunders.
Anything further? So, I'll end on a good note. We have up here some cards made from the Bucksville, yeah, third grade class. They made a bunch of thank you cards for all the, and thank you to all the Aldermans that did show up. So, as a thank you, I like to read it from the teacher. It's, thank you so much for the invite to the City Hall, and for taking time out of your busy schedules to help teach my third graders about local government. They love their time at City Hall and with everyone. Thank you again, Mrs. Jewery and the kids from Bucksville School. So, just, they're up here. If you'd like to look at them, one made a terrific drawing of Mayor Pernaruski, it looks like, so, we'll save that one also. So, with that, is there anything further? Alderman Mosley.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.